Okay, board members, we have a very special presentation for you tonight by art students from our newest elementary school, Madden Elementary. And at this time, I want to introduce Nicole Henderson, the art teacher at Madden, who will tell us a bit about the special gifts that were made by our talented students. Nicole?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the students and their parents who came here this evening for the board recognition. We have seven special art students here tonight whose artwork was selected to be showcased as gifts for our Board of Trustees, as we recognize our board members for their service to our district. This is my first year of teaching, and I was so honored that my students were given the privilege of being part of this very special recognition. The students worked very hard to capture the superhero spirit that each board member represents. To create their pieces, the students used oil pastels and watercolor paint to create the background of a colorful city. They then used pencil and crayon to create portraits of the board members and pasted them over the cityscape. Lastly, they used construction paper and marker to create the word bubbles that overlap the background to complete their piece. We hope that you enjoy all of their wonderful creations.
Now, we're ready for our special presentation. Students, will you please stand and come forward with the gifts for each of the board members when I call your name and the name of the school board member who will receive the gift. First, to honor Board President Grell James, Miley Nguyen will come forward with her special gift and stand with Mrs. James. Miley would like to be a teacher when she grows up. Next, to honor Board Vice President Dave Rosenthal, Jordan Dowell will come forward with his gift, and please remain standing with Mr. Rosenthal. Jordan wants to work for the government when he gets out of school. And to honor Board Secretary Kristen Tassin, Lily Gardner will come forward with a gift for Mrs. Tassin. Lily would like to be a ballerina when she grows up one day. To honor Board Member Jason Burdine, Emma Sue will come forward with a special gift for Mr. Burdine. Emma hopes to be a veterinarian when she grows up. To honor Board Member KP George, who could not be with us tonight, Acela Rodriguez will come forward with her special gift for Mr. George. Acela would like to be a professional soccer player one day. And to honor Board Member Addie Heiliger, the Madden art teacher will come forward and show her a wonderful piece of art done by Daya Patel. And Daya, who designed this artwork, would like to be an artist when she grows up. And to honor Board Member Jim Rice, who is not here right now, Hannah Pradia will come forward with her special gift for Mr. Rice. Hannah wants to study to be a doctor. Thank you all, and would you please remain standing where you are so that we can take a group photo? In closing this part of the presentation, we all, we want to recognize the parents of these talented students. And before we start taking pictures, because they're going to want to take them too, could all the parents please stand? I know you've got cameras in hand, and we'll give you time to do this.
Graduation. What a great time in our lives. Everyone is congratulating us as we move on to pursue futures beyond what we can imagine. This event may be the only time that our parents and students...
One, two, three. Beautiful. I'm going to let you all take something home.
Okay, and I think, Stacy, if you could help us, I think we're ready with the video.
Graduation. What a great time in our lives. Everyone is congratulating us as we move on to pursue futures beyond what we can imagine. This event may be the only time that our parents and students see the Fort Ben ISD Board of Trustees as they shake our hands and hand us our diplomas. But do you really know what a board member does all year long?
So, we present to you...
...a year in the life of a Fort Ben ISD board member. Throughout the year, our seven trustees spend more than 100 hours attending approximately 24 board meetings and workshops, and these hours were more than double when we factor in the time that they spent preparing for these meetings.
The trustees work very hard to prepare for meetings, to read, to study upon issues, and to inform themselves. And we do that in an isolated environment. We're by ourselves. And then, when we come together in our meetings, is the time that we share ideas. We try to listen to one another. We try to learn from one another, and we try to make the best decisions we can for our community and especially for our students.
But our board members do so much more than just participate in meetings. When not in our boardroom, our trustees attend exciting events such as groundbreaking ceremonies and school dedications.
My favorite thing about being a board member is visiting schools, attending graduation, the Teacher of the Year program, and various recognition programs at our local schools. I'm a volunteer, and I have a background in public education, but most importantly, I'm a father. And I know that public education is crucial in our children's lives so that we can sustain and improve our community and world.
My favorite thing about serving on the school board is when we have student recognitions at our monthly meetings to see how they have achieved so many things in art, fine art, music, sports, academics, and to also recognize the teachers that inspired them and coached them and mentored them.
The job of a trustee is really being a governing body that holds the district accountable. I want to see our students be the best that they can be. I want to see them being critical thinkers so that they can look at news, look at politics, look at science, and see all sides of it.
I became a board member because I wanted to be a voice for our students, our parents, and our teachers in our district. This is definitely a labor of love. I wanted to make sure that all of our children in our community have an equitable education. And I wanted to make sure that our students are able to compete in the classroom, college, or in the future.
I believe education creates opportunities and open up the whole world for our children. And I wanted to be a part of that, that process. And I want to be a cheerleader to our educators, and I know that our educators are happy, the best is going to come from them, and it's going to influence our children's education. That means they're going to get a world-class education.
When it comes to public education, I think the two things that motivate me the most would be excellence, being the absolute best we can possibly be in Fort Ben ISD and in the state of Texas, and making sure that absolutely every child has the opportunity to reach their full potential. When we say "all children" in Fort Ben ISD, whether it's children in regular ed, pre-AP, special ed, every child should have the opportunity to succeed.
So, as you can see, the year is extremely busy for our seven board members.
They are our most dedicated volunteers, and we want to thank them for their service to Fort Ben ISD and our community.
I want to thank Stacy and the whole team in Community Relations for all their hard work in putting that together. It's going to go live on our website tomorrow, so the whole community can see you all on live and in person on video. So, anyway, we just, you know, we want you to know, I really appreciate the students and the staff and all the folks at Madden who helped make tonight special. They worked really hard, and it's always fun to see our students give the board members gifts because they always look just like you. They do such a good job of bringing you out in, you know, in modern forms of art. So, thank you for all you all have done for Madden. And trustees, just from me, also, I would just say again, thank you for being outstanding teammates, for all you do to support me in my role, for all you do to support our administration. You know, people see and we know, I always say it's like we're married. I've got a lot of spouses. And in marriage, things are really good some days, they're rocky some days, but in the end, we're committed to one another as team members, and we're committed to leading this district in an exemplary way. And it's an honor and a privilege to work with each of you every single day. So, thank you for all you do. On behalf of the district, all of our staff, we, you're appreciated, and we're doing our best to help this community know about you and all that you do so that they can share that appreciation as well. So, that concludes our recognitions. Miss, Madam President?
Very well. Thank you so much. Next, we have audience items, which I don't believe there are any. And so, now we'll go on to information. So, Dr. Dupree?
Yes, ma'am. We have three information items for you this evening. The first one is going to be presented by Dawn Carlson, our Director of our Student Affairs Department, and Dr. Javier Villarreal, one of our Assistant Superintendents. And they're going to bring an update regarding district discipline through the first semester of this school year.
Thank you to the Madden folks for being here tonight. Thank you for the special drawings and paintings you made for us.
But that was wonderful. So, good evening. We're very excited to share with you a discipline overview for our district tonight. So, I'm Dawn Carlson. I'm Director of Student Affairs. Dr. Javier Villarreal is one of our wonderful Assistant Superintendents in the Department of School Leadership. We also have our other four amazing Assistant Superintendents in School Leadership, and I have my coordinator also from Student Affairs with us tonight. So, as we begin this, one of the things that I want you to keep in mind is that we are going to be sharing some data. But when we look at data, we really want to acknowledge the fact that when we look at data, it's a lot of numbers, it's a lot of graphs, but it's just not numbers on a page. Those numbers always represent our students and our children. And so, we want to remember that there are faces and there are stories with everything that we look at. And so, we will bring a little bit of that to you tonight also as we go through this. So, tonight, we're going to talk to you about some yearly data over the past three years. We went back to 1213, 201314, and 201415, and looked comparatively over those three full years. We're also going to look at quarterly data comparing this year to 201415 of last year, the first nine weeks and semester data. And then, we're also going to discuss trends, strategies, and initiatives. So, as we begin, so we're all on the same page, we want to define what removals and suspensions, the definition of what that is. So, we have in-school suspension, or ISS, and that is removing the child from the classroom but not the campus, and they are still able to do their work on-site. We have out-of-school suspension, or OSS, and that is actually removing them from the campus. They are allowed to make up their work. Both of those assignments could be as short as a half a day, or it could be as much as three days, but three days is the maximum. And then, we also have the Discipline Alternative Education Placement and the DAEP. We have two individual campuses in Fort Ben. We have Ferndale Henry and MR Wood. And those are placements that are off-campus but assigned there up to 45 days, but there is the discretion to make that shorter. We do have some placements that might be 20 or 25 days. And mandatory placements go automatically, but discretionary placements must run through the Department of Student Affairs. So, we're going to jump right into the data. So, we're first going to look at our three-year trends for ISS. And the two pages you have in front of you, I've kind of done it two ways. So, you have numbers in front of you if you're a number person. If you're a visual person, you can also see very clearly that we've had significant decreases. High school decreased over those three years 4,472 incidents. Let me, let me kind of say that again. These are not the amount of students, these are the amount of incidents that occurred. And so, middle school, 3,772, and elementary, 616, which is approximately a 50% decrease at all three levels. And then, we have OSS over these three years. Again, we have significant decreases in our out-of-school suspensions across the board with our numbers. And then, you can visually see that we have decreases, 1,029 at high school, 536 at middle school, and 597 at elementary. And this is about a 20 to 30% decrease across all levels. I would like to, just a note of caution, that these are significant decreases. Typically, we would not continue that type of a decrease over multiple years to come, but we definitely want to continue on that trend. And even if we start to level out, we want to make sure that we're really looking at what we're doing and how we're assigning consequences to our kids each year. So, for DAEP, which is a little bit different because these are very, the severity of the infraction that the student has done is, is a little bit different. And so, we have increased at our high schools, but I also want you to think about the enrollment increases that we've had over those years. So, 95 is, is an increase, but, but I think if we look at the amount of students that we've gained across the high schools over the last three years, I think it's relative. Middle school and elementary, an increase in two and a decrease of, a decrease of two and an increase of four is, is very minimal at both, both ends. But one thing that I do want to look at when we look at DAEP removals, this is TEA data from last year. And so, as you're looking at this, I need you to think about it holistically. So, when we look at Fort Ben ISD in our district, and we look at 100% of our referrals, when we look at the DAEP assignments, 61% of those referrals were mandatory, and only 39 were discretionary. And so, the important part is that is actually the way that it should look, because we should have more mandatory than discretionary. You can see in the region in the state, their numbers are backwards. And so, they have an increase in their discretionary removals. And truly, when you look at what the law says as far as mandatory removals, those are, I mean, those are things that are, are big. You shouldn't just be sending kids to the DAEP for minimal offenses. It should be things, if you're going to remove them from their campus and remove them from the culture that's there, then it needs to be for something significant. Mandatory referrals are things such as drugs, weapons, assaults. There's a list of what a mandatory referral is. And when we in Fort Ben look at discretionary removals, we look at the severity of the offense. We look at things that are repeated over the course of time. We look at what the school has done before we look at removing a child. And so, I feel like this, this signifies the correct trend of where we need to go. So, now, jumping to current, we're going to look at the comparative data for ISS. So, our blue and red bars indicate our first quarter, the first nine weeks from 1415 and the first nine weeks from 1516. And you can again see the decrease. At elementary, there was only a 10 incident increase. So, it was, it was slight, but there was a decrease at high school and middle school. And then, again, you can see the significant decrease in the fall semester with high school and middle school. Now, what I want to point out at elementary is there was, there was an increase, but I think as we look at OSS, I think it kind of speaks to maybe why that happened. So, if we turn the page and look at our out-of-school suspensions, again, at high school and middle school, we have decreases at both the first nine weeks in fall, but you can also see the decrease at elementary in the, in the same, in the first nine weeks in fall. And I feel like we've talked a lot across the district about keeping the kids on campus and working with the kids. And so, although ISS has increased, but that's a way to keep the kids on campus, our OSS has decreased. And so, so I feel like they're moving toward our goal with keeping kids on the campus. And then, comparative data for the DAEP. So, again, both middle and high school have decreased over the first nine weeks in fall. Elementary, in the first nine weeks, there were only three. There were three last year, there were three this year for the fall semester. We had a few more than that, but I can still say that over half of those placements were mandatory. I can also tell you that several that were discretionary were not the full 45 days, and they did have to do more with safety concerns and, and if students were hurt or something like that happened. And so, we, we do look at elementary very differently if we have to assign them. So, now that I've shown you all the data, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Villarreal, and he's going to talk to you about some opportunities we have.
Thank you, Dr. Carlson. As you can see from the data that Dr. Carlson just presented, we've made great improvement in the area of discipline throughout, throughout the district. However, it's not where we'd like it to be, and so, we've identified some areas of growth. Specifically, we have, out of our 71 traditional campuses, we have nine campuses that we've identified that are still struggling. Those nine campuses have been listed in your board memo. I do want to point out, though, when you start looking at the data, the four secondary campuses, the two high school and the two middle schools that we've identified as still struggling, actually are decreasing. So, they're moving in the right direction, and good things are happening. However, when you compare that to the other secondary campuses, their numbers are still significantly higher. And so, we understand that there's work to do there. So, in working as the Department of School Leadership, the Assistant Superintendents work closely with the principals to, you know, create specific plans and so forth, because every campus is unique. And in doing so, it's important to understand that we use data to guide us in, in how we're going to best support each campus. And the specific data that we use is listed up here, but the principal daily dashboard is an important tool that the principals have access to. They look at, it tells them which discipline referrals have not been attended to, how long they've been there, which discipline referrals are drug-related, and other warnings and so forth. And so, that's a great tool that we can have great conversations with the principals about if something were, you know, to be happening that we needed to address. Also, every Friday, we get weekly reports sent to us, and each Assistant Superintendent then forwards it to their respective principals in schools that they support. And on those reports, it tells us the numbers and the percentages of ISS, OSS, and DAEP placements. And what we're looking for in those reports is, you know, are the numbers increasing? And if so, is it significant? What's going on? And we start asking those questions. And sometimes, we have to ask the school to pull specific reports via Skyward to drill down, you know, more on that. And when we do those reports, you can look at the different offenses, you know, is it fighting, or is it classroom disruption, or what's happening at this campus? It can also tell us where are these offenses happening? Is it in the cafeteria? Is it in the classroom? Is it in the hallways? And then, tells us which teachers have referred the, the students. Is it the same teacher or teachers? You know, that may tell us, okay, maybe this is a classroom management issue that we need to work on, and so, it can tell us a lot. We also can see which administrators have assigned the discipline, and is it consistent throughout? Or, you know, is the same student who did the same offense getting the same consequence and so forth? And so, that information is extremely important for us in able to guide and, and coach the principals. So, you know, we've talked about the data, and we've kind of told you what the story tells us, but what I want to talk to you now about is the things that are happening on each campus, you know, the day-to-day work that our administrators and teachers are doing so we could keep students in the classroom. And so, I have a list of strategies for secondary and elementary that I'm going to talk to you about. Want you to understand that it's not, not an all-inclusive list. You know, there's way more things happening on our campuses, and, you know, some innovative things as well. But wanted to point out some that, that a lot of our campuses are using. To begin with, for our secondary campuses at the middle school and high school, you know, we're utilizing CHAMPs and foundations. We do understand that not every secondary campus is, you know, utilizing the program with fidelity. However, for those campuses that are implementing CHAMPs and/or foundations, there's great benefits that we're seeing throughout the campuses. At the middle school, we also have implemented restorative discipline, and Dr. Carlson will talk to you a little bit about that in just a second. And then, we have other things ranging anywhere from, you know, detention all the way to some incentive programs happening at our secondary campuses and loss of privileges. Now, at the elementary level, we're also utilizing CHAMPs and foundation. And just like the secondary campuses, you know, we do understand not all campuses are implementing it with fidelity. However, those that are, we are seeing the, the benefits from it. And other things that they're using range anywhere from the mentoring and coaching to our teachers being trained in de-escalation techniques, friendship groups, and so forth. So, those are just a sample of the strategies and the work. That's helping the data go down in decrease in discipline and keeping our students in, in seats in the classrooms. So, with that being said, do want to point out that we have recognized that there is a gap that does exist here in the district, you know, in a structured way of supporting parents. You know, we do have some campuses that do a great job in having presentations with our parents, you know, and teaching them instructional strategies to help their kids at home. We even have some campuses throughout the district that do presentations on how to build better relationships between school and home. However, we do understand that that's the gap that we have to focus more on. And in doing that, we hope to see that our numbers are going to continue to, to decrease. So, with that being said, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Carlson, and she's going to talk to you about restorative discipline because we've had great success with that this year.
Okay. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about restorative discipline. We have implemented that this year across our middle schools. It is a whole-school approach. It targets more conflict resolution and peacemaking. It's, it's about healing relationships, it's about repairing harm, it's about getting everybody involved. But, but then, I also don't want you to think that, you know, all the middle schools are sitting around kind of singing kumbaya. So, they're still taking discipline seriously, and there are still incidents that would warrant an ISS or an OSS or a DAEP placement. And so, it doesn't replace disciplinary consequences, but it, it adds a lot to it. And so, I'm going to talk about that just a little bit. So, restorative discipline, there are three main goals for restorative discipline, the accountability, community safety, and skill development. So, accountability... And so I have a list of strategies for secondary and elementary that I'm going to talk to you about. Want you to understand that it's not an all-inclusive list. You know, there's way more things happening on our campuses and, you know, some innovative things as well, but wanted to point out some that a lot of our campuses are using. To begin with, for our secondary campuses at the middle school and high school, you know, we're utilizing CHAMPs and foundations. We do understand that not every secondary campus is, you know, utilizing the program with fidelity. However, for those campuses that are implementing CHAMPs and/or foundations, there's great benefits that we're seeing throughout the campuses. At the middle school, we also have implemented restorative discipline, and Dr. Carlson will talk to you a little bit about that in just a second. And then we have other things ranging anywhere from, you know, detention all the way to some incentive programs happening at our secondary campuses and loss of privileges. Now, at the elementary level, we're also utilizing CHAMPs and foundation. And just like the secondary campuses, you know, we do understand not all campuses are implementing it with fidelity. However, those that are, we are seeing the benefits from it. And other things that they're using range anywhere from the mentoring and coaching to our teachers being trained in de-escalation techniques, friendship groups, and so forth. So those are just a sample of the strategies and the work. That's helping the data go down in decrease in discipline and keeping our students in seats in the classrooms. So with that being said, do want to point out that we have recognized that there is a gap that does exist here in the district, you know, in a structured way of supporting parents. You know, we do have some campuses that do a great job in having presentations with our parents, you know, and teaching them instructional strategies to help their kids at home. We even have some campuses throughout the district that do presentations on how to build better relationships between school and home. However, we do understand that that's the gap that we have to focus more on. In doing that, we hope to see that our numbers are going to continue to decrease. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Carlson, and she's going to talk to you about restorative discipline, because we've had great success with that this year.
Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about restorative discipline. We have implemented that this year across our middle schools. It is a whole-school approach. It targets more conflict resolution and peacemaking. It's about healing relationships, it's about repairing harm, it's about getting everybody involved. But then I also don't want you to think that, you know, all the middle schools are sitting around kind of singing kumbaya. So they're still taking discipline seriously, and there are still incidents that would warrant an ISS or an OSS or a D A E P placement. And so it doesn't replace disciplinary consequences, but it adds a lot to it. And so I'm going to talk about that just a little bit. So restorative discipline, there are three main goals for restorative discipline, the accountability, community safety, and skill development. So accountability is not just about the students, it's about everyone. So it's about the teachers, it's about the parents, the students, the administrators. Everybody involved is accountable in some form or fashion when we start doing this, because everybody's got to work together. The skill development piece, I think, is also very important, because when we think about teaching kids, we always think about teaching them academics. But we don't always think about teaching them behavior. We don't think about how to teach them to respond in a certain situation, if they get frustrated, if they get angry, if somebody says something to them, or if they need to respond, how is it appropriate to respond with your body language, with your tone? And some of that is just talking through it with the students, and so that's another component. But the biggest piece is that it's a process. It's not just a canned program. It's a process to work through with everybody, and you're going to hear about that in just a minute. So when we look at it, it's truly a paradigm shift, and sometimes it's even more of a paradigm shift for the adults than it is for the kids, but it's also for the kids. When you look at traditional discipline, you know, you look at what happened, who did it, what are we going to do to them? And it was very cut and dry. And so, but now with the restorative approach, we still look at what happened, but then we try to talk to the kids about, what were you thinking? And if you have or had middle schoolers, you know they're not always thinking when they act in that moment. And so it causes some reflection, it makes them go back and think. And then we talk to them about, what have you thought about since? So we pull them back in after the fact, after they've had a chance to kind of process what happened, and what have you been thinking about? Who was affected? Who was affected is very powerful, because so often the kids are only in that moment. So if it's a fight, they're only thinking about, you know, who I was fighting and what we were fighting about. They don't think about the impact on their parents, the impact on the teachers. If it was a classroom, they interrupted instruction, they may have scared some kids. If it's on a bus, they don't think about the safety issue that they just caused. And so they have to reflect on who was affected, and how did that impact them? And then the most powerful piece is what do you need to do to make it right? And oftentimes, if you have kids either process or give their own consequences, sometimes they can be harsher than what we would do to them. But the other piece of that is if they truly want to make it right, they become very sincere in their actions, and that can be very powerful. You know, if I get in a fight with Javier and I truly want to make it right, I'm not just going to walk up and be like, sorry. And, you know, with my little attitude and everything, I'm going to actually make him know that this is not going to happen again. And this does take a little bit of time, and as I said, it's a process, but it makes a huge difference when you impact those kids, and then a lot of times, those things don't reoccur, because you've taken the time to work through them. One component of restorative discipline are value circles. We have restorative chats, we have restorative conversations, and then we have restorative circles. There's multiple types of circles. Value circles is one of the first circles that you would hold. When you sit around in a circle with everybody involved, you ask them to think about somebody that has made a big impact on their life, or somebody that means a lot to you. And then you ask them, what value did they teach you? And those are the values that get brought to the circle. And when each person presents their value and explains why it's important to them, once everybody has presented their values, then the group has to decide that these are the values they want to hold. And so it's the values for the classroom, or the values for a campus. And probably the most impactful way of sharing this is to have somebody talk about what is actually happening on the campus. And so I'm going to ask Jerry Cameraman, the principal of Missouri City Middle School, to come up, and she's been implementing restorative discipline a little before we started this year, so about a year and a half. And I'm going to let her tell her story.
All right. I am really excited to tell you about the story of what's going on at Missouri City Middle School, and how restorative discipline has really shifted the mindset and the culture of our campus. It truly has. And so there's some data that you're going to be seeing, but before you do that, before I get into the data, I just want to let you know from a teacher's perspective, because that's what everybody, it always comes back to, how's this really going to impact what's happening in the classrooms? And how's this really going to impact the learning that takes place in the classroom? So I'm going to show you the data in a few minutes, but I have a few emails that teachers have sent me, because I want you to hear their words, okay? And then I'll explain some things that were going on on our campus in the past, and some things we're doing differently now. This is from one of my teachers that had struggled in the past with discipline, and would be, if she were standing next to me, she would truly own and say, I was a struggling teacher, okay? If you came into her room today, if you visit my campus at any time, I can take you into her room, and you would not think that she had been a struggling teacher, okay? And these are her words. Another word, another way that I've changed this year is restorative discipline. I have to tell you, I really had a hard time with this concept when we were told to use it. You changed that for me one day while I was walking down the hall. I overheard you tell another couple of adults, why do I have to send them a student to ISS if they've changed their behavior and are doing what I want them to do? I thought about this statement a lot, and it actually changed what I do in the classroom. I call them teachable moments. I had two on Friday's exam. In one class, a student had a phone out while she had her test and it was glowing. I, of course, thusted her and told her that she needed to give me the phone, which she did not hand over, and would receive a zero on her exam. Then I thought, you have to let, you have to let her take it again, and there will be paperwork if you don't come up with something else. So I took a deep breath and asked for the phone again, and told her that she would get it back. I gave her a fresh answer sheet and a test, and put her in a different chair, and told her that she would need to take her test near me. She passed her test, and she got her phone back, and I told her that if it happens at another time, she may not get another chance or get a chance to take her test again. She thanked me and hugged me and left my room. I had another very similar incident later in the day, and I knew how to handle it this time, same results. There's a saying I have said since I started teaching, I said it when I interviewed for the school. Every day is a new day, and every fifteen minutes is a new fifteen minutes. I would add one more line now to say, sometimes every thirty seconds is a new thirty seconds. I can't take what students do or say personally. They don't mean it any more than what I do when I get frustrated. I've heard from my students that they like me because I don't hold grudges, so I know I'm fair, and I want to say thank you for making these things possible. This is one that we just recently had a circle with, and this one came in in January, and this was in regards to, well, when you first approached me about having a circle with the student who violated my trust, I was moved in a negative direction. I felt like, how dare you and those administrators want me to talk to a kid who disrespected me in this way? I thought to myself, do they really want me to sit with the child? Boy, was I wrong. My negative vibes switched to a warm and fuzzy feeling. Allowing the student and myself to speak without judgment really helped. We came together in your office for forty-five minutes. I was first reluctant to speak on how I really felt, but the student needed to hear and feel my concerns. After talking and allowing her the room to speak, we came to an agreement. We both left feeling positive, and I saw growth in her as well as myself. I wanted the student to understand that I was hurt, but I was in a place of forgiveness, and it worked, capital letters. I feel this type of meeting can help everyone involved. I tried a circle in my class, and it was amazing how the students responded, and the class culture is better for it. Thank you for exposing me to such a wonderful tool. And this one. I just wanted to send a feedback email after our circle up. When I went in this morning, I was determined that the student was going to be removed from class. I was under the mindset that I'll give this a try, but then the result's going to be the same, removing the student. After this morning, I have a whole new outlook. I'm extremely glad that I gave this a chance, and even more thankful for Mr. Brown for being such an awesome facilitator. We have many people who facilitate them. Getting to know what the actual issue was with this student really softened me up to her, and at the moment, I would not let anyone remove her from my class. I wasn't really sure about this circling up when we presented it at the beginning of the year, but after having experienced it firsthand and seeing how it really does make a difference with our students, I'm trying to figure out why we haven't adopted this program before. Once again, I want to thank you, Mr. Brown, and you, Mrs. Cameraman, for suggesting that we do this, but also taking my concerns seriously and not completely throwing out the possibility of removing the student if I didn't feel comfortable with it at the end of the meeting. All of these situations occurred, basically, on my campus, what's actually happening is changing adult mindsets, and it's changing children's mindsets as well. Every child in these stories had consequences, okay? Because they did things that deserved consequences, and I want them to know, yes, we're going to talk, and we're going to work through them, and we're going to work on our conflict resolution skills. My goal is to not have repeat discipline issues from the kiddos. What I've seen taking place on the campus overall is a general culture shift. And when I arrived on campus, the mindset had been, remove the students, remove the problems, and let the children who want to learn, learn. That had been the mindset. To be honest, they all wanted to learn, okay? Behaviors sometimes are going to be for either you want something or you're avoiding something. Getting to the root cause of the behaviors is really the key to changing what's taking place on your campus. That impacts adults, too, okay? So once we started having the circles, I learned about this at a conference that I attended. It was always kind of a philosophy of mine personally, but when I arrived on my new campus in the spring of two thousand and fourteen, there was a session at the principals' conference in June, and I had all my APs go with me so that we could hear it. And we started it last year, actually, on our campus. And we didn't do the full circle and the full formal version of it, but we started working on the mindset of the administrators, of what are we really trying to do? And I told the administrator, one of my veteran administrators had been on campus, and he explained to me, well, I thought I was doing a good thing by getting these troublemakers off campus. And I said, but they always come back. They always come back and have, has their behavior changed? And the majority of the time, the answer is no, it hasn't changed, okay? We just keep sending the same kids away, and they get further behind, and it snowballs. So I'm not quite sure how to work the doodad. All right. Oh, there you go, push a button. And so this is what's happened on our campus. Two years ago, in two thousand and thirteen and fourteen, we had a hundred and eighty-six documented fights. I think there are probably a little bit more, because I know when I was there, we were having three fights a day, okay, in that springtime. I was racing and chasing constantly. The next year, last year, we had a twenty-seven percent reduction, and I was really proud of that. I thought, we're moving in the right direction. We've dropped it down. My goal this year was try to get a thirty or forty percent reduction. So far this school year, we've had twenty-seven fights total so far, and it's very rare. It's not the norm anymore. It was the norm that that's how you resolved your conflicts. But now, the other day, I was listening to some kiddos behind me, and a little girl was talking, some of the dance team girls were talking, and she goes, well, I'm going to have a circle. I'm just tired of all this drama. So I'm, we're just going to circle, and we're going to deal with this. And I'm thinking, and she goes, I don't know if it's going to work, but we'll try. And I'm thinking, yes, we have something going on where the children are asking. That's huge. The kids come to us, the adults now, and say, I'm having a problem with someone, instead of trying to do it on their own. The other thing that has changed is the teacher mindset as well, though, because the teachers now are seeing students in a different manner. Instead of a battle of, you're so disruptive, I can't teach, we're taking a little bit more time to say, why are you so disruptive? What's really going on? And many times, once we allow the time to get to the root, we're able to move past it, teaching goes on, and students now are much more engaged in the classroom. We're just not having that battle. Next button? Which one do I push? Okay. This is discipline referrals, and this is just for first semester, a single semester, from August twenty-four, twenty-five to like December eighteen, okay? So if you think about that, that's not very many months, September, October, November, December, you know, not even four full months, really. In the fall of two thousand and thirteen, there were one thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine office referrals. That's teachers writing students up, okay, for some, something that's taking place. It can be something that happens in common areas. That, you can't even process that and truly do your job as an instructional leader. If you have that much that you're having to process, that's all you're doing. That is truly all you're doing. You become a, it's a revolving door of discipline, okay? Last year, again, I was extremely excited. We had a twenty-six percent reduction, and we were down to one thousand three hundred and eighteen, and I thought we're moving in the right direction. Last year was my first year to implement restorative discipline, so I want you to realize that last year, we were thinking more in lines with the administrator and the students. The difference this year, we've really involved our teachers in it, okay? And so the teachers are using restorative practices more, okay? I think that made a big difference. And as you can see, in the fall semester, we had five hundred and six office referrals, a seventy-two percent reduction over the two years. Just hit space, hit arrow. And in-school suspensions are down considerably, seventy percent over the course, and this was first semester, first semester. And I was speaking to the principals last week, and I said, I was really excited about the one hundred and thirty-eight in comparison to the four hundred and seventy and the three seventy-five, but I kind of peeked into their folders on our share drive, and I realized we still have some work to do. A lot of the schools are much less than that, but that is a huge change for our campus. My ISS monitor is actually really excited. She has days where there's no one in ISS, or maybe there's two or three kids instead of twenty-five and thirty-two. And we rarely had more than five or six in a single time in there. So it's actually ISS where the kids can get their work done and still maintain themselves and get back into the classroom. Out-of-school suspensions, I still want to work on this one a little bit more, but we started at two seventy-eight, and we're down to one hundred this past semester, and that's a sixty-four percent reduction. And the A E P placements, two years ago, in the first semester, we had twenty-eight, and this semester, we had twelve, okay? I think that was the last of it, all right? So the biggest difference, though, I think, is the mind shift and the kids recognizing that, learning how to talk through the problems, and the teachers recognizing that there's always a story behind the behavior. That's made the difference on our campus, and it wasn't that painful. At first, like, the teachers didn't have buy-in, they're thinking, eh, what is this? We're just going to talk, big deal, nothing's going to change. But they see the change. I have, can I read one more email? Okay, no? Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
I think it's very powerful to actually hear. I could talk about it, I'm not on the campuses implementing it, and due to time. I have multiple stories from multiple campuses. I ask in October, I ask again in January, and the stories keep coming in from the principals and from teachers and from counselors about different students and different incidents that have occurred on their campuses, where kids are making better choices, the grades are coming up, the discipline is going down, and things are just working better, and the culture and the climate on the campuses are improving. And so I know restorative discipline's making a huge impact on our middle school campuses. And so it makes it kind of hard to be patient in implementation, but next year, this year it was really focused on our sixth graders. So next year, it'll roll up to seventh, and then it will continue to roll up, and we'll go into high school within the next year or two, two to three, and down into the elementaries. And so, because once some of these kids have been in middle school and had access to it, they're going to have a little shock when they get to high school unless we get high school ready for the kids. So, because the kids are going to be ready for the teachers. So that's, that is our plan for implementation with restorative discipline. And so Dr. Villarreal is going to talk about our continued focus.
So in closing, after hearing all this, we understand that we still have a continued focus, and what that is, is to decrease removals of students, you know, from the classroom. And in order to do that, you know, it's not up here, but after listening to Ms. Cameraman, definitely the change in mindset is huge. And I can say, we actually have one of our other middle school principals, Ms. Deidre Lyons-Lewis, in here, and I happened to witness a couple of weeks ago, her talking to one of her assistant principals who wanted to remove a kid, and, you know, I just watched, and it was about that change in mindset and using restorative discipline. So that's going to be paramount as we move forward. one of her assistant principals who wanted to remove a kid. And, uh, you know, I just watched, and it was about that change in mindset and using restorative discipline. So, so that's going to be paramount a- as we move forward with that. So how are we going to do this? Uh, well, it, it's all about building relationships and building that culture where the students feel valued and keeping them engaged and having high expectations on ourselves and, and others. And so what does that look like today? Well, we can say that, you know, through CHAMPs and Foundations, uh, the Willow Ridge feeder pattern's also doing Capturing Kids' Hearts, uh, which is supporting, uh, this effort, and as you've heard, restorative discipline. So at this point, is there any questions?
Thank you both very much for, uh, that presentation, and thank you, Mrs. Camerman, for sharing your stories from your campus with us so we can at least hear what's going on. We do have some questions, and we'll start with Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you. Thank you all. That was, that was great. Um, that's, um, it's very encouraging, and, and, um, you know, you hear, we've had a lot of criticisms, I think, over the past, and, uh, this is, this is something that I, I really appreciate seeing, and thank you for, for trying to make this work, and, and I know we're all behind you, and we want to hear more. So, thank you again. Um, I, I do have, um, just a question of, when we were, Dr. Carlson, when you were going through the numbers, um, the, uh, of the discipline data, um, what are some examples of, of out-of-school suspensions at, at the elementary school level? I'm just shocked at, you know, how many there are, or the, the DAEP. Obviously, you know, I'm, I'm, you need to respect privacy, so I'm not asking for specific, you know, identifiable, but just in general, I mean, that's, I was just kind of surprised.
Typically, um, more a major disruption in the classrooms, not just like making noise or being disrespectful, um, but oftentimes where another student may get hurt, pushed, kicked, you know, something like that. Um, if, if maybe a destruction of property, they're tearing things off walls, or they're kicking over chairs. Um, those types of things, profanity sometimes, but again, it has to be excessive. It can't be one, one kind of blurt-out incident wouldn't necessarily do that. I think it ranges from campus to campus, um, and, and principals kind of, each principal has a philosophy of what things are going to be like on their campus. Um, but with removals, and we implemented it last year, um, every removal has to be approved by the principal. The assistant principals will bring it to them, and, and they'll, they'll make their suggestion, but a principal has to approve if a student is going to be removed from the campus. Um, and, and I know that the assistant superintendents also do get involved on some of those cases also. And so we are, we are trying to analyze those closer to make sure we're making the best choice for kids, for all kids.
All right. Well, thank you for that, and again, keep up the great work. Yeah, we, we really, we're counting on you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Uh, Ms. Hellinger?
Yeah, I would also agree with Mr. Rosenthal. This is very encouraging. Um, just from raising two boys, you know, I've had a lot of experience with these policies. But, um, one of the things, um, I did hear you say, one of the policies, um, that I read, um, concerning, um, removal to, um, alternative schools, it states, um, to May, there's a word in there that says May, um, remove them from the school for 45 days. And does that mean, um, is your interpretation of that that there's a must, or that there's some flexibility with that type of, um, removal?
There's discretion in the amount of days, and, and we do look at that. I, I will tell you that, um, the majority of the time, it's 45 days. It kind of depends on the situation. When we do look at our elementary students, typically, we do not do a full 45 days unless there's extenuating circumstances. Um, I, I, I think we even had one kiddo maybe go for 15 days. Um, but that's a long time for an elementary stu- student to be off their campus for three weeks. Um, but that's part of the discussion now, is, is how long, what are you thinking? And, and asking questions, I ask a lot of questions. They didn't love me at first, but, um, and I know the assistant superintendents are doing the same thing, because a lot of times, the principals will run it by the assistant superintendents before they call our office, too. Um, but, but lots of questioning, just to, sometimes when you're too close to it, it also makes it a little difficult. And, and like Ms. Camerman said, when you're, you're trying to change mindsets, when a teacher is frustrated because of something that just happened, you have to respect that. But then you also have to look at, you have to look at the individual child that had the action, you also have to look at the class as a whole, and then you have to make those decisions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Burden?
I wanted to say thank you, Mrs. Camerman. That was just a phenomenal story. All of those were great stories, and that's, that's the good stuff, and, um, I just can't thank you enough for, all of you for, for implementing this. I had the same question as, uh, Mr. Rosenthal did just about, and you answered that about the elementary. That just really stood out, and, um, thanks for the clarification on that, but thank you once again. This is, this is good stuff, and I appreciate it.
Mrs. Carlson?
So I, Mrs. Camerman, I really appreciate you coming and sharing the emails, because I'm going to say, when I saw value circle activity, I thought, uh, what? What does that mean, and how is that possibly going to help? So the examples were, were very helpful, so I appreciate you doing that and reading the emails for us, and I, I appreciate you sharing the data with us as well, because this shows us that what's actually happening, that we're getting results. So my, and, and just as a general statement, I would say that I definitely, I'm glad to see that we're decreasing the removals. I'm glad to see that we're decreasing the ISS and the OSS. Um, but more importantly, I'm glad to hear that we're actually doing something to help kids and to help better the behavior, because just, you know, I don't just want to decrease the removals. I don't, I don't think any of us do. I think we want to see what it is that we're doing that's productive to allow kids to perform better academically. Um, so I heard you say that, well, first of all, my question is, do, do we have a grade minimum for DAEP for elementary school? I mean, we're not putting kindergarteners in.
No. In the state of Texas, you cannot be removed unless you're at least six years old.
Six years old, which is still really young.
Very few, very few kids below like third grade would, would typically go.
Okay.
And the campus, again, has to, has to provide documentation of, of everything they've tried to implement and all the things that they've done before a child is sent to the DAP, unless it is a major offense, because there are sometimes those one-time things rather than a pattern of repeated behavior.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. So I, I will say, Mrs. James and I have been out to visit Ferndale a couple of times, and I personally was very impressed with the work that they're doing there. I, none of us like to hear about removals. None of us want to see it happen, but, um, we were able to visit with some of the students as well as some of the teachers who seemed to care very much. Um, the students, um, the ones at least that I interacted with, um, had a lot of good things to say about what was being done there. So I, I did want to just give kudos as well to, to that program. You said we had a, a gap in parent support, and so tell me, or not necessarily parent support, but in educating parents between school and instruction at home, and so tell me, how are we going to fill that gap? What is our plan?
I don't know that we have a solution just yet. Um, and I, we do have some campuses, as, as Dr. Villarreal said, that are, um, making strides in that direction, and we do have different parent programs at campuses or in different areas, like special education or Title I or ESL, um, but, but a type of structured teaching-type program for parents is, is something that, that we may need to look into. But when we have things where we bring the parents in and we're working with them, um, I think the restorative discipline assists in closing that gap a little bit, but that's kind of one or two parents at a time each circle. It's not something that we can grab necessarily a whole bunch of parents together. I mean, potentially, but, but right now, that's just something that we're looking at, and we do want to recognize and acknowledge that that's there, but, but we don't officially have a solution yet.
And I know we've talked a lot about engaging parents, and how are we going to engage parents? And in my mind, that's really half the battle. I mean, when we talk about student discipline, a lot of times, it's just engaging the parents. And, um, I know you guys have heard me say this before, but I really like the idea of schools mentoring schools. If there are schools that do it well, let's see if we can't pair them up. Just being PTO president at Heritage Rose for three years, I've seen them do a lot of good things in engaging parents, um, which is probably why we have a pretty low incidence of discipline out there, referrals and that type of thing. So anyway, I just, I was just curious if we had, were thinking about that, or if that was going to be part of the plan, or just, you know, maybe something to consider.
Okay.
Um, it did, and just for clarification, did you say we have restorative discipline being implemented at all middle school campuses?
Um, thirteen of our 14.
Thirteen of 14. Okay. And are we planning to expand it to all next year?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Great work. I mean, really good work. Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, so, and did I, I think I read in here that it's just at the sixth grade level, so we have some expansion to do across the board. It's, it sounded too like we have to get the adults sort of in the mindset first, so I guess it's a multi-stage thing, so, um, thank you. So I, uh, I think most everyone has kind of addressed the things, uh, that crossed my mind. I appreciated how you shared the data with us and balanced that, uh, the numbers and the data and looking at that, but then also, um, the focus on understanding what's going on in a child's life to help them, um, to be in school and to do better and to learn, as we know, it's complicated sometimes. So thank you for sharing all this information, and, um, and Mrs. Camerman, thank you for sharing about Missouri, the stories from Missouri City. That was very informative. Uh, so I think we're, we're good. Thank you for sharing all this data with us. Very helpful for us to understand.
Thank you all. Appreciate your preparation tonight. Have two more items. The next one, um...
Dr. Dupree, could we take about a five-minute break since we've been a little bit of time? So would you mind if we had about a five-minute break?
Absolutely.
And then we'll come back to items B and C.
Sounds good.
Thank you.